We had a wonderful Christmas. How about you?
That was great.
That was a cute family.
I loved that, yes.
Before we got ready to take the picture, I have to tell you the cutest story.
Okay.
Well, she didn't want to stop playing with toys. I was like, oh, this is a toy box. And Dan goes, come on, we're gonna take a picture. She's like, no, no, no. Right? So she just threw a freaking bag. So Dan picked her up and goes, you're going to timeout. And so he puts her in timeout and she's in there just crying, crying. And then Dan goes back, finally talks to her and says, you have to be nice and help this. You know, we need to be happy. We want to take a picture and then we're gonna hold him presents. And then he put whatever toys on. You have to be a good girl. Yeah. And she goes, okay, Mom, I'm gonna be a good grandma. Or I'm gonna be nice. And she says, uh, Dan goes, okay, you have to quit crying and let's go do this for Grandma.
Yeah.
She comes out and she tells her children, Grandma, I'm ready for a picture. So Dan's getting her ready and getting her picture. Because first we didn't want them just to stand there.
Testing, testing. 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 Can you hear me okay? Take 30 seconds. Can you hear me now? Blah blah. Thanks, Jake.
Morning. How's things?
So it's 9:02 in this time on our schedule for our weekly business meeting. If you all stand, we'll have Mike Rosedale do the open prayer.
All right. To Heavenly Father, thank you for this Christmas break, for me to remember your birth and start a new year. Now there's so much going on in our country, creating peace, calmness, and justice everywhere. All the disputed elections, everything in the land.
Follow me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the order of agenda as presented.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Do we have anybody in the public that, uh, nope, okay. We'll go ahead and skip public comment unless anybody in here wants to make a comment. Except for Milton. Milton, you're not allowed to make a comment. I'm just kidding. Let's go right into the consent agenda then, please.
All right. Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Move along to the clerk, Mike Rosedale.
Good morning, everybody. Testing. Okay, commissioners, before you, I have claims batch number seven in the amount of $1,096,776.21. And demand batch number seven in the amount of $141,505.26, totaling $1,238,281.47 for your approval.
Chairman, I move to approve payment of FY '21 claims and demands in batch number seven totaling $1,238,281.47.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I don't see any questions. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you. Next, I have EMS claims, number seven, in the amount of, or yeah, claims batch, $5,175.21 for your approval.
All right, I move to approve payment of the FY '21 EMS claims in batch number seven totaling $55,175.21.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes.
Thank you.
Mike, planning, Milton.
This is, uh, this is just to finalize the vacation that we heard on December 9th. Uh, this is a, there's a 30-foot easement inside of Lot 24A that's shown on the plat map of Car Creek subdivision. Uh, this is, uh, this is to vacate five feet of that 30-foot easement. So we're just requesting the resolution to complete the file, so.
Chairman, I move to approve Resolution 2020-91 vacating five feet of a 30-foot ingress egress easement inside Lot 24A of the Car Creek subdivision and conveying the vacated area already vested in the owner of Lot 24A of the Car Creek subdivision to show record of owner Neil Howard.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
I'm taking after clap, those long motions.
Thank you, Milton, I know. Engineering, Spencer. Engineering, Spencer.
Good luck.
Spencer Ferguson.
Hey, Spencer, how's it going?
Good morning. It's going good. The engineering department would like to request, uh, permission to obtain qualifications from interested architectural firms to furnish design and construction documents for the new EMS station one and office complex to be located at thirteen fourteen Ontario. Uh, the engineering department intends to obtain qualifications from no less than three architectural firms. The qualifications are due to the Commissioner's Office February twenty-fourth.
Yes. All right, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I moved that the county authorize the engineering department to obtain qualifications from no less than three interested architectural firms to furnish design documents for the EMS station one and office complex.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes, thanks, Spencer.
Thank you.
Uh, moving along, let's go Road and Bridge, Mr. Clapp. By the way, Road and Bridge did a fantastic job once again with snow plowing and sanding.
They have been on it pretty well.
Yeah, I went for a little drive yesterday with my parents. My parents were up and had a full view of all the county roads. They looked awesome.
Not quite to the satisfaction of the Jeep that we had on Roop Road located under our fender well, but, um.
I saw that picture. It's a weird place to park a Jeep.
That's what the driver thought that morning, I'm sure.
I bet.
So the first item I have, this is a annual report. We're required to re, to supply ITD on our operations of our road budget. It, uh, begins with a beginning, beginning balance of fiscal year twenty and ends, and it breaks down our operations. Um, I'm not gonna go through all of the numbers, but we had four million, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars of property taxes locally. We received in highway users, we received three million, three hundred and nine thousand dollars. Um, sales tax, two hundred and twenty thousand and change in all of those. Um, SRS, another three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Those are our funding sources. I'd, once again, point out that, uh, our winter maintenance costs are one I just like to remind people that it's nearly a two million dollar operation for our wintertime operation. That's trying to show fairly realistically what it costs us to operate. So I would.
And that's without scooping up the random Jeep every now and then, right?
That's just an investment of our time on a Sunday morning while we're, uh, two deputies and one state patrolman and a wrecker, so. And fortunately, almost no damage to the truck.
Oh, good.
Quite remarkable.
And nobody was injured.
No serious injuries, yes. So with that, I would recommend that, uh, the board approve the fiscal year twenty twenty annual report and I can certify that and send it to the state.
Jeff, I don't know if you can read that. That's kind of short for Steve.
Yeah, what's going on?
I know he's really working.
I've got a, I've got a bad reputation here, fellas, for being verbose.
That's a little brief. What'd you leave up?
He made up for it by talking a little bit lengthy. We were hoping to get done a little quicker, but anyway, Mr. Chairman, based on the information provided, I move to approve the FY twenty twenty annual road and street financial report and have the board certify and sign the report administratively.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Move along, Steve.
The next item is the DEQ VFW rebate agreement. And this is a truck purchase, actually, and as you'll notice in the motion, I could not figure out how to make that any more brief than I did. But the essence of it is we're buying three trucks. We're getting a forty percent rebate on each of the trucks. The trucks all have individual prices. Uh, two of the trucks are dump trucks. One has a Allison automatic in it and that truck is more expensive. The other one has an eighteen-speed manual. That one's less expensive and the other one is a tractor and that one is the least expensive at all. Forty percent rebates, those are, figures are all in that body of language.
All right, I move to approve the vehicle purchase agreements from Freightliner Northwest for the trucks approved in the DEQ VW settlement rebate agreement to reduce the cost of replacing three old trucks with three new Western Star forty-seven hundred trucks by a forty percent rebate of two hundred thirty thousand, two hundred thirty thousand and ninety-nine dollars.
And I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
With that, it is nine eleven and we will go ahead and recess for five minutes and then come back for executive session.